We're live.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the February 16th meeting of the Mountain Community Capital Fund. This is a special meeting of the operating committee. This meeting was called at our February 2nd meeting and noticed properly by the City of Asheville. The agenda and materials have been posted on the website. So we'll go ahead and get started. Thanks again for everyone for joining out of cycle. We'll kick off the meeting by doing a roll call. And what I will do is I'll go down the list, ask everyone to state their name, who they were appointed by, whether or not they're a voting member. And then we'll proceed to see if we have quorum. So I'm going down the list, starting at the top. Carl.
Carl Alguire, City of Asheville appointee, vice chair, voting member.
Charles.
I'm Charles Savage with the City of Asheville. I am not a voting member.
Dee Williams.
My name is Dee Williams. I'm a Buncombe County Commission appointee and I am a voting member. Thank you.
EB Otterstall.
EB Otterstall. I'm with Buncombe County and I'm not voting.
Frank McGowan.
Frank McGowan, City of Asheville staff from the Finance Department, and I am a voting member.
John Appleby.
Hey, John Appleby, appointed by the City of Asheville and I am a voting member.
Kelly Foster.
Kelly Foster, Mountain Biz Works, non-voting member.
Karen Omansky.
I'm Karen Omansky with Self-Health and I'm not a voting member.
Lydia Turgeon.
Lydia Turgeon, Carolina Small Business Development Fund, not a voting member.
Matt Raker.
Matt Raker, Mountain Biz Works, not a voting member.
Nikki Reed.
Good morning, Nikki Reed, City of Asheville staff and a voting member.
Rachel Sawyer.
Morning, everybody. Rachel Sawyer here, Buncombe County staff and Buncombe County appointee.
Rachel Taylor.
Rachel Taylor, City of Asheville staff, non-voting member.
Yaslin Gonzalez.
Yaslin Gonzalez, Mountain Biz Works, non-voting member.
And then Christopher Murray. I see you joined as well.
Yes, Christopher Murray, Mountain Biz Works, non-voting member.
Excellent. Is there anyone on the call that I did not mention? All right. My name's Tim Love. I'm the Chair of the Mountain Community Capital Fund, Buncombe County employee and voting member. So based on the roll call, it looks like we have quorum. Rachel Sawyer, give them the thumbs up. So we've got quorum, so that means we can take any action today as an operating committee if needed. Our first item, again, the agenda as posted on the website, our first item under Old Business is the approval of the minutes from the February 2nd meeting. Do we have a motion for the approval of those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve those minutes.
Motion and a second. At this time, I would ask everyone in favor of the motion to raise your hand. You can do so virtually and otherwise. All right, please lower your hands. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? Seeing none, minutes passed. Thank you, everyone, for your time on that item. Right, so our next.
Tim, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make a note that last time we forgot to take public comment. However, there was no one in the queue and no public comment, so just wanted that for the record.
Awesome. Thank you. Very well. So we'll do, the Chair will do a better job of public comment, but if the Chair forgets, by all means, someone please remind me before we adjourn. Our next item under Old Business is to review the revised quarterly report. And so to sort of kick this item off, you know, we'll hear from Yaslin as well as Kelly. You know, as discussed in our last meeting, there were some issues identified with the last quarterly report. And I know a number of the questions that we've received from the committee were about data quality, controls over that report, just making sure we've got the best data. What we've done, Kelly and Yaslin are going to sort of walk us through some of the issues that were identified. And what has been done by the Mountain Biz Works team is all quarterly reports where there was an issue have been amended. And we have added those to the meeting folder for today. So that's the February 16th meeting folder. You know, you may not have, obviously you haven't had time to review those four different files, but wanted to provide some context for what happened from Kelly and team directly. Regarding the quarterly reports moving forward, you know, if we want to sort of bring this back at our next meeting and continue the discussion, the review of these reports, I think that's totally acceptable. But what I'd say is for Kelly and Yaslin, if we could kind of walk through sort of the issues that were identified and then talk about the most recent report so that we have the best data as we proceed into this meeting today as we're considering claims as well as the new loan request. So Kelly, Yaslin.
Yaslin, you want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, so we did go back and amend on all the reports, went back to the beginning and made sure that all the data was correct. And Kelly prepared a comparison of the reports that were sent out and the amended ones. So you can see every report here and you can see the data on the top, so you can see the comparisons, the original and the change as of the end of the of the quarter. I don't know, Kelly, if you want to walk through the report.
Yeah, can y'all hear me okay? And can everyone see the screen okay? Okay. Yeah, I thought it would be easier to do a visual just from comparison. So I put this spreadsheet together. What we did is we went back and balanced everything to the P and E, to our internal reports, trial balance and delinquency reports. And I went back and amended those from the March 31st report through the December, I think it's a December 21st report. So just real quick on the screen here, the blue column is the old report.
Kelly, thank you for this. Do you mind zooming in?
Sure.
Let's just go ahead and look at, focus on that March 31 report. That way everyone can see all the numbers and the changes.
Yeah. Is that good?
One more time.
One more?
One more.
One more. How's that?
I think that's good. Thank you.
All righty. So what, when I was going through these, what I discovered, the main issues with the report, the incorrect data was in really three key areas. There was small discrepancies in the outstanding balance which have been corrected in the total loan count, and that was just a formulary not pulling over correctly within our system. What most everybody is going to be concerned about, obviously, is the delinquency. So I went back and tracked it and there, what had happened, if you look at the reports from 3/31, we had two loans that were, had defaulted. It was over the 30-day past due period at $65,000. The additional ones, it's in the yellow column here, that's the net change that you're seeing on here. So there were actually five loans. The difference in that is we under-reported, we should have reported three additional loans that had defaulted at $137,000. And the allocated, the guarantee allocated delinquent loans was at $114,000. And I think there was a problem in the formulary on the delinquency percentage there. So if you don't mind, I want to slide over here, or to go back while I say, make sure everybody understands. The blue column is the column of the original reports that we sent that had errors in the data. The green are the updated ones that I had sent in last week that was, I think, sent out to the committee. The yellow is the net changes in those. So if you go over to the report on June 30th, the amended report there, you'll see the same trend there that there was not pulling a delinquency, it was still pulling the same two at $65,000. So every report that we sent you only had those two delinquent loans, which I think is, you know, contributed to the, obviously, the concern there. And so if you scroll down to the same thing with the non-31, the comparison there, we still had the two with the $65,000. It should have been nine at $229,000 and the difference was seven loans. And then you can see where we did correct that in December, that there was still a small discrepancy in the actual balance it was pulling over. It was, the number was right, but the balance was just slightly off by $856 there. So that was the main difference here as far as the delinquency. And then there was a slight difference up like at the top in the actual volume and number outstanding. Let me come back to here. And then one thing I noticed too here on the bottom, there was a slight error. The number of loans that we had were reporting that had been paid off out of the fund. We had only reporting of one loan. It was actually two. There was the same balance here, but there was an error in the totaling of those two balances. It was actually $31,000 versus $34,000. So you'll see those changed through the remainder of the reports, through the December report. And then I wanted to bring to your attention too, somehow we reported one claim was paid at $34,950 and that's not accurate. The only thing I can figure out with that is I think what had happened when we originally started doing the reporting with MCCF, from my understanding, we were reporting it in a spreadsheet format that had, I think, like the individual loan numbers listed there. And then at some point, we transitioned to this format and there were like minor changes along the way. And I think what happens when we're making those minor changes, somehow a line got entered and somehow it's pulled the wrong figure up for the ones that, the claims that had been paid there. Because if you see here, the total amount paid off was 34 and then it was down here at 34 here. So I've taken that off there to correct that. And so I want to scroll back to the top here. And go over to the December report here. So this, just to make sure we're totally transparent, this is the report that we had sent. There was like the small discrepancies in the balance that I had uncovered of the ones that we had submitted in December 21st. And again, I balance those through the internal trial balance to make sure we're 100% accurate there. So that's all been corrected internally here. And then the delinquent loans were corrected there, but that's small change in the balance there. The charge offs, which were not reported on the previous reports, those charge offs took place in October. That's why they were showing up on the December 2021 first report. And I think that's where a lot of the questions came up because how are we showing six accounts that are charged off when they were never being reported as delinquent? And that's where we're saying that there was an error in the report there and those have now been corrected. So that won't happen in the future there. And then, of course, we've got the amounts down here that have been corrected too. So I want to stop there. I can explain what we've done to change it, but I want to stop and make sure that we're answering any questions that anyone may have.
I mean, I've got a couple. Go ahead, Carl.
No, go ahead.
First, just in general, so what internal processes have you put in place? Because there's a lot of errors in the spreadsheet. So what, what have you, what have you done internally to make sure it doesn't happen going forward? And then secondly, if I understood this right, it seemed like there was a lot of delinquencies in maybe the 9/30 numbers, but then they went up, then went down. So those delinquent loans are no longer delinquent. Is that what I'm to read from that?
Yes, let me answer that question first and then I'll go to the other one. What you'll see, especially if you report quarterly, the criteria that we report the loans on the report should be anything that's over 30 days. So in, in that category, you could see something that has hit maybe 45 days. And one thing we do do is we work with the clients from day one. So even if they hit the less than 30 or even before then, we work with the clients to give them TA or whatever that we can do to support those clients to help them work out the problem. So naturally, you're going to see the delinquency go up and down, especially if it's just right over the 30-day mark. And so there could be some in that category. If they've dropped off there and went back down, that means that the loans that were delinquent during that time period have been resolved and they're no longer past due. So that's where if you look at the month end, and one thing as far as the correction of the reports is we're going to make sure, for example, you see this one here is dated 12/21 and we want to move to a end of cutoff date for the end of the month because that matches all of our internal reports and everything's consistent internally here. So does that answer the question as far as the delinquency, why you may see it go up or down there?
It does, but you know, begs the next question is like if it's going to be that volatile, that we need some other mechanism to see which ones are truly a problem, which ones are just like 31 days instead of, you know, like 60 days. So we need, we need some other line item on here to know which ones are truly going to be delinquent or the ones that you're concerned about versus ones, it's just a matter of timing.
Right. Yeah, to answer that question, and Matt may want to step in here a little bit when, after I say what I have to say on it. Originally, when we were doing the, I think originally when we started reporting, and those of you who were on the committee then remember, there was a spreadsheet, I think, that we sent. And that spreadsheet, it didn't have the client's name. We can't give that, but it had specific loan numbers. And then there's columns, there's in that spreadsheet that has the demographics, it'll have if they're past due, the category if they're past due. And so what we are going to do is we're going to make that spreadsheet also available in addition to this on a monthly basis. So what you will see is you will have this spreadsheet. And of course, we can add something to this if you want and wanted, but you'll have an amended or an addendum to that spreadsheet. The addendum that you're going to have to the spreadsheet is going to be very similar to what we had provided in the beginning before we changed to this format. And that spreadsheet will have a list of every single loan that's enrolled in the program. It'll have if the loan's been paid off. It'll have if it's been refinanced, the amount that's been refinanced. It'll have the past due category if it's less than 30, how far past due it is. And so by doing that, you'll be able to look at the, this report here and then go to look at that other spreadsheet. And you can see which loan in there is past due. So for example, you would be able to say, like right now, there's three on there that's past due totaling $87,000. So on that spreadsheet, you'll be able to click on that spreadsheet and see loan number one or whatever that account number is and whatever amount it is, the $20,000 or whatever it's past due this far past due. And then you would also be able to see the demographics on it.
So I don't want to hog the floor here, but so I get, I get the, I get the tying up the dollar value to the end of month, end of quarter value, makes perfect sense, but it doesn't explain how you can miscount the number of loans. That just seems a number that's like fairly easy to do. So I don't understand how you can miscount the number of loans. Because surely that's not dependent on quarter end or month end, you know, market value statements.
Well, it actually, it is material on the number of loans just because with the timing of payments during the month. So it, you know, it might change from 12/21 to the end of the month if a payment comes in, you know, and then gets reconciled into the account. So then our, our internal risk rate reports that we're working off it has a different number than whatever the, you know, date period was that was.
Yeah, I can understand, I can understand that and the delinquency number, but it surely can't explain the outstanding loan count number being wrong. I mean, because when you issue a loan alone, it's just one. It's like, it doesn't affect month to month, quarter to quarter, does it?
No, 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 it, it wouldn't. And, you know, I think then also we didn't, we didn't rec, we didn't catch, you know, the, the underlying loan data was correct, but the, the block in the, in the sheet that was totaling up, doing the formula stuff was not accurately. So you could see like that the delinquent loans number was just, was just stuck at whatever the loan number was for.
No, but I'm talking about the, the 51 versus the 48 in the spreadsheet I'm looking at right here. So it's like you're miscounting the number of loans that have been issued. So that seems like an awful big thing to miscount.
Yeah, Kelly, any, any color on, on that change there?
I think it was how it's pulling over from the spreadsheet. What I did, what I balanced this number with is the actual trial balance internally. At that point now, and these were both as of 12/21, so that wouldn't, I mean, there, there could be a change if we moved to the month end because you could do a loan during that time period, but.
And just to be clear, the, the total loan count is at the top, you know, line five in there. So this is, this would be effective based off of when a charge off was applied. And so when it became inactive, if, if, that's my understanding. So that, that number would change as those charge offs are booked. And then you'll also see the loans move from delinquent, they'll drop out of delinquent and it'll show up down in the charge off category there. So you'll also see the change in the number of delinquencies once a loan is charged off at that, yeah, if that.
No, I understand now how that can be fluid, but cell number, whatever that is, nine, U9, it says 48, whereas what we were presented was 51. So you miscounted the number of loans that we'd issued.
Yeah, I think the charge offs were not backed out of that number. So we had 59 total loans enrolled and then the number that were still outstanding, I don't think, whenever they did the charge offs that in, at the timing of when the report was created, that those were caught there, if that makes.
Okay. So again, does, what processes, other than moving the timing when the report's done, what internal processes have you changed to make sure the data is accurate going forward?
Yeah, great.
Tell me answer that, Matt, then you can kind of, yeah, so, yeah, internally, like I was saying, we'll still have this spreadsheet, the, or this, this report, but the spreadsheet has been reviewed internally by the IT people to make sure all the formulas, anything that pulls over into the spreadsheet is accurate. And then we'll have two sets of eyes on the report. The report will come to the credit department, which consists of me and Christopher. And so one of the two of us will double check and make sure charge off delinquency, all of that information's correct on there. And then the portfolio group is going to double check and make sure all of the other information is accurate on there. So we'll have checks and balances internally to make sure that there are absolutely no errors before it leaves the organization. And those numbers can easily be balanced to our internal trial balance. So we've added that in place. Matt, and Matt, do you want to add anything to that or?
Yeah, I think, you know, basically what we've learned, and this is part of the growing process of this new facility, is, you know, the portfolio group was providing the correct loan data, you know, but then wasn't, you know, wasn't running the whole process all the way through the end. It didn't see what the final report was and how it was being compiled. And so they, you know, had they signed off, you know, all the way through, you know, they thought that just the loan data was being communicated as well. And, and then, you know, I think now that we, now we have a better understanding of exactly what, what, you know, what that final is. And so we'll have two eyes both from the portfolio group and from the, the credit group. And, you know, and we're kind of talking about, you know, as other lenders enroll in this, you know, that's just going to add additional, you know, how we, how we do the checks and balances to make sure that other lender data is also accurate. And so building the system to be flexible to, you know, to account for that.
Okay, thanks. I think I've hogged enough time.
Not at all, John. I think really good questions and, you know, the, the data is core to what we're doing. I mean, we have trigger points that say what we can and can't do based on delinquencies and loan counts. And I think it's a valid, valid question. One thing before I come to you, Carl, Kelly, did I hear you say that you're going to balance the report against your trial balance?
Yeah, that's what I, that's when I created these. I went and pulled a trial, trial balance for every single month and made sure that the numbers balanced to that. So yeah, everything should balance.
I think, John, to your question on controls, I think making sure that this report is balanced before it comes to us against the trial balance on whatever frequency is a, a good step too. One other item I would ask before Carl. Kelly, I also heard you mention frequency and providing a monthly report. And I think, you know, that visibility, I think that would be a good step as well because, you know, it's more muscle memory, like this report's updated more frequently, we're seeing it more frequently and there's less time for us. So I think that frequency is probably a good idea to be increased to a monthly basis. Additionally, we're really close on a lot of these trigger points. So I feel like to be good stewards, we're going to have to increase that frequency. We can come back to that, but I just wanted to throw those two items out there. Carl, you're next. And then Dee, I saw your hand was raised after Carl.
Thank you, Tim. The thing that I think is still missing on this report, which is really important to our charter here, is of these delinquent loans of all of this data is what are startups and what are growth or operating capital? Because we have thresholds there that we can't factor in based on this data. If that could be added, I know we've talked about that for a couple of months now. And the only other thing I would say about this is this is obviously great work. This is what was missing. This is, this is putting us on the right track. I guess it's still a little hard to, you know, it's sort of crushing the spirit of this group that, you know, we were working on no delinquencies. Maybe we had one that was heading that way. But there were clearly delinquencies. And aside from the data, it seemed like the right people were on this call month after month after month. And, and the bell did not go off that, oh, wait, we do have delinquencies. We have multiple delinquencies. And I don't know if that is an issue of communication or feeling appropriate to share or what, I don't know. But I also think there's sort of an internal operational issue there that, you know, if something looks wrong, that it appears that those who would have access to that understanding either didn't or didn't speak up.
And I mean, to that, I mean, we, we knew about the delinquencies from day one, like from the, you know, from when they missed the first payment and have been proactive on it. And I think Kelly's kind of reports on, on those, you know, shows that, I think the disconnect, Carl, was, you know, our portfolio and, and credit team, you know, like our internal reports that we're working on are not these reports. And so I just don't think they were watching these committee reports or even aware of what they were because they were off cycle, didn't match, you know, didn't tie out to ours. And so just, it was, yeah, so that, that's not the, not the forms that, that we were using. I just, you know, and so now we're, now we're making sure that we're putting these other steps in place so that it is more. Yeah, I think they'll be able to catch that more in the, in the future because they should, they should tie out.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just add one thing to the question you asked there about the new or existing loans there. The spreadsheet that, that will be sent out with this will have it listed if it's a new and existing business. And then, of course, we usually, when we present things for approval, we'll have it in there if it's new or existing. And then, of course, when we present things for claim payments, we'll have whether originally was a new and existing. So we'll make sure you have access to that information on the, the addendum with the spreadsheet.
And, and just, you know, credit to the, you know, the, our portfolio team, when they, when they did see this report, you know, they immediately saw that number, you know, I think it was in December, like, wait a second, that, that doesn't look right, you know? And so that's what kind of triggered us to go back and catch this. And then we realized, oh, that formula is not even compiling the data in the sheet and whatever. And so we're, we're now working, but we had no idea that that wasn't even being caught before, but we do now.
Dee, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I just really wanted to say or ask. One of the things that I had been asking when I was even a city appointee was about the triggers and also some of the information and also the status or the role of this group. Is this group a group that rubber stamps? I've had that issue with all the loans that were presented and that was before some of you came on board. Or is this really an oversight committee? And the disjointed place for me was that when we were presented loans, the number one thing was that we were presented those portfolios or those requests the day of rather than having access to that information prior to the meeting at any point. And then the data or the dashboard that went along with each respective loan requests, whether especially as pertains, I think we sat down, I did along with Jane, when she, her tenure was here. And we put together in 30 minutes this sheet that, that probably which we use now. So I think a lot that has gone on has been like a disconnect between this oversight committee and being. and being perceived as an oversight committee or a rubber stamp, just to be very factual. The last thing that I'll say, and I don't want to monopolize a lot of time either, is that the reporting requirements of the dashboard becomes very critical and data becomes very critical as we chart performance in everything because we are, we all have limited resources. The thing that I ask about the ethnicity and race category, and then there's an other there. If you're not able to do it internally, if MCCF is not able to do it internally, can we provide those categories in our operating agreements such that the categories will be apparent and we don't have to guess what other means? I've also had a small discussion with the performance auditor about this. And last night, we even touched on it at another unrelated meeting about how important data is. So those are my observations and my questions. And if this spreadsheet, along with another, that we can look at trigger points is available to us, I will be satisfied and just happy to, to make sure that these people succeed. So thank you.
Appreciate that, Dee. You know, I've got a couple items, and, you know, this one stems from a question that Dee has raised, you know, with demographics. And as we think about our loans, I think understanding our delinquencies as it relates to our demographics is important. You know, when we're talking about delinquent loans, you know, are these black-owned businesses or these Latinx businesses or these women-owned businesses? I think there's something to that in terms of having better visibility for this committee. So that's something I think we need to look at. And I think in general, we need to, maybe not today, but at our next meeting, carve out some really good time to talk about changes to the reporting beyond what's been discussed today and make sure we're on the same page with getting the best data available to this group. One item I do want to get in the weeds on just for a minute, and Kelly, I'm going to need you here a little bit. You know, this comparison report's great. We didn't post it. I would love to post this as part of the documents. And so, you know, that would be great. So I appreciate it. I'd like to, if we could go all the way back to the very first row or first columns, Kelly. I'm not trying to. I think it's already been said, but, you know, we, it's, it's over a year. And, you know, we've been operating under the premise that we had two delinquencies, but there were five. And so I will not continue to harp on that. But that potentially, you know, could have changed our discussions over the past year. I'd like to just kind of move forward and watch how delinquencies move to charge-offs on the spreadsheet. And because I think it's important for this group to understand like how those are related. If you can just keep on scrolling.
Down or over?
Over to the right. Yep. You know, so now we're up to nine delinquencies, no charge-offs. If we keep going, still at nine. All right. And so here's where we begin to see the, the change. And so we move, what was nine delinquent loans becomes three, and now we have six loan charge-offs. And I think, let's talk about that BizWorks team. Like, the answers may be obvious, but I think the committee needs to understand how these are related, when things move, and things of that nature.
Sure. Yeah, I'll banter them, Matt, if you want to add something in there. So what had happened, you know, to Matt's point, we obviously knew about the delinquencies prior. That's something I do every single month on a daily basis is work on delinquencies. So I knew that they were there. What had happened was, these reports are generated quarterly. So the previous report was generated September thirtieth. And I don't have the exact date in front of me. I'd have to look back. But I think the, the first charge, all the charge-offs were taken in the last quarter. I think there were, there were maybe two in November, and then I think the rest, and I'd have to look back at the date. But the bottom line is the charge-offs took place in the last quarter. So that's why you're seeing the drop there from that. And so that was six charge-offs. I'd have to go back and do the math on it. But that, the nine that should have been reported, six of those would have charged off. And then the three, yeah, that balances out to the three wouldn't have had any that crossed that hit the greater than thirty days. And that, so that's where, that's where you see the biggest change there. And I think that's where, to be honest, when we started realizing something is wrong here, because we had to make sure when the charge-offs were reporting, make sure it gets to the report. And then we realized that there's errors in that from there. And then that's why we corrected the report back in December.
That's great. And just to continue on this path, so what's the, what's the trigger for BizWorks to move something into the charge-off category?
The trigger is a lot of things. The biggest thing that I want to communicate is we do not pull that trigger per se to charge an account off until we've exhausted every single resource that we can possibly do to try to collect on it. And I know there was a lot of questions. It was, came around liquidation and stuff like that that we can go over, you know, whenever at the time you want me to go over it. But it starts like, you know, from the very beginning, you know, before they even hit the thirty days or hitting reports that we can look at and see. And so from there, we do everything we can to meet with the client, check in with the client, try to find out what is going on with the client, what hurdles they have. And that, through my career, I've often found, when you use that proactive early approach, when they first hit delinquencies there, that, that's your window of opportunity to be able to correct it or help provide support. When you start seeing it move through the cycle, if it's over thirty and they're not, you're not seeing payments in there, when you start, it gets more serious as you go down through there. You have to determine, okay, is it just a small problem cash flow that you can fix? Is it more funding? Are they not having new sales? Is it a model that's just really not working? So we basically go through all that to determine what's happened with the client. And so once we, we go through that and then it goes through the categories of getting further and further past due, by the time it reaches, you know, the one-twenty or one-eighty category at that point, we really should be at the point where we can make a decision of it's, if it's a charge-off or not. What I can say with these loans, we did hold them a little bit longer because we were working with a lot of these folks to try to find some way, you know, to help them out. And I think one of the ones that Christopher will talk to you about in a few minutes is one of those in the category, we've realized that they're struggling and we've stepped up because we've realized there's something that we can do that we feel comfortable to recommend funding, that we can help them help get their business back on track and help them survive. And so it's that key turning point where you have to decide, is there anything else that we can do to try to help the client? You have that key first, and then you have the key of, okay, we can't help the client, but now we have to turn to what are our best options to protect Mountain BizWorks or any funder that's involved with this committee or whatever? What can we do to protect those funds? What's a max recovery we can get? What is reasonable to do? And so then we start working through that process. So ideally, when you get to the end, or it's the same way with SBA, is you can say, I've done everything that I can possibly do at this point, and we do not expect any recovery. So we did not charge anything off if there's any chance at all to have any recovery on it. Sorry, that was a bit of a long answer. Matt, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I think that was, that was perfect. I don't think I could add anything. That's great. Thanks, Kelly.
Kelly, I appreciate you sharing that. And I think you said a few things that I took note of, and one relates to a comment from John earlier. You know, talking about the delinquency and the age of the delinquency. You know, something at thirty-one days is less threatening than something that's at, you know, a hundred and eighty. And so especially if Kelly and team, your charge-off triggers start, like you start looking more closely when something's in the one-twenty to one-eighty day range. And so that seems like something that we need way better visibility on in a summarized way. Like, I don't think we should be tracking through fifty loans to see what's at a hundred and eighty days delinquent. But I think that'll give us better data and a sense of like where we're at and the true health of the portfolio. This isn't about like a judgment on BizWorks and technical assistance or anything like that. It's just making sure that we know like the portfolio's in good standing overall. And if not, like, do we have an opportunity to do anything differently? So.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, transparency is a key. And, you know, I shared last, last time that I've been doing this for a long time, more years than I care to admit. And I've never had this type of reporting error. So this is like really hit me hard of, we got to make sure we get this right. But to your point, Tim, I agree. I think with transparency, the spreadsheet that I was saying that was similar to the one that we used to send, there'll be a column in there that'll be really easily visible. For example, if you look at this, the master report here and see, okay, there's three loans that are past due at eighty-seven thousand, you'll be able to immediately go over to that spreadsheet. The column, you'll be able to go down and it'll just say past due. You'll be able to identify the three that are past due. And then there'll be a category there with the number of days past due. So you'll be able to see if it, I don't know if it'll have the numbers, but it'll have like thirty-one to whatever category it is.
And if the committee wanted to, we could easily expand this performance delinquency box to have that thirty to sixty, sixty to ninety, you know, over ninety. So you could kind of see that progression a little bit, too. Things that are working towards that possible charge-off.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. John and then Rachel Sawyer.
Yeah, just to follow up to that. So, so the delinquent lines, you know, went up to nine and got charged off quick. Is that just a coincidence that it jumped or did BizWorks change some internal process to shift, to discover the nine and, and, you know, charge them off? Or, I mean, why did it suddenly jump up at that period of time? Is that some internal process you guys changed or was it just coincidence?
It, well, I would say neither because we didn't change the internal processing. And to be clear, the delinquencies were on our radar. We were working these, these loans, you know, on daily, weekly, monthly basis. And so we have to keep in mind, with us having the error in reporting, we're only recording that you had the two that were past due. And then all of a sudden, we drop up and we have six charge-offs. So it looks like, I know how it looks externally, it's like, oh, gosh, what's happened now that you've got, you went from two past due to having six charge-off? I think moving forward with the way.
Yeah, but if, can you, if you could just scroll to the left before the nine-thirty column, that you don't show any, if I'm remembering rightly, you don't show any, like, is it number three or something like that? So go across to the next one. So, okay, so it's, you've captured the progression of those delinquencies quarter over quarter now. Okay. And it just, and they just went, all six went delinquent just because they're all coincidentally at the same time or?
They didn't go at the same time. They were staggered. And I think, Matt, you can speak to this. I think one thing last year when I was working on, I think it was claim number one, that was our first claim that we had with committee. And so what my question was is, okay, I've done everything I can possibly do with this claim. We need to, with this loan, we need to follow claim here. And so I know Matt and I had talked about exactly what the process is, exactly what format that you guys would want to see, what information you want to see. Because we want to be transparent as possible here on that. And so I think, you know, they're, they didn't all happen at once. Like I say, we had our eyes on those. So when they charged off, they weren't all like exactly a hundred and twenty days or exactly a hundred and eighty days. They, they were, some were a little bit more seriously delinquent than the others were. Matt, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think, just, just, just to kind of reiterate, yeah, so we had five, you know, back in, in March. And then so then it went up, I think, to nine, you know, in the next quarter. And so we were working those, again, exhausting everything possible. And then I think during that fourth quarter, several of those got to the point where they were over the threshold and, and we deemed that, you know, we don't think those are going to be, you know, there's any way we can collect on those. And so it's time, you know, to charge them off.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's, you know, we, we don't have any expectation on these. But sometimes there can also, even after a charge-off, you can still have recoveries, you know, after that as well. So it doesn't mean that it's necessarily all exhausted, but we are writing it off on a current basis of it not being collectible.
Thanks, y'all. So we've got a number of hands raised. I think this is a health, really healthy discussion. I think we need to conclude, like, continue this discussion as long as necessary within reason. Because again, as Dee said, this is the data. It informs us. It's important. So our order is Rachel, Dee, and then Hunter.
I'd like to offer to go last and I can share the list of suggested edits at that time when you're ready to switch topics.
Thank you, Rachel. Dee and then Hunter.
Thank you. And so I guess my question would go to, as John and Carl probably alluded to, is why we did not know in a timely fashion. So I think what you've offered is something of resolution, of indicating how far gone or how far past due these, these loans are so that we can hold up to the oath that we've made to not only those elected officials who appointed us, but also to the people. So that is really what has been my concern is that I have not, I have tried to act as, as, I guess, prudently as I could, but I, I, I just didn't have the information to, to do it, to do it with. So I guess the question, my question is, there was, it looks like there was an error, but there was also a gap in reporting on an ongoing information as far as this oversight or operating committee is concerned. And this is what we had spoken and talked about. It was our proper role when we first started out. Some of y'all weren't here. And one of the things that was a concept was that the lender has the, has, has all the tools to, you know, to know when these loans are prudent and are not. And we were looked at as something of a rubber stamp committee, so to speak. My question has always been, are we an oversight committee with the powers and the formats in place to have the information that we need to make sure that these businesses are successful, but yes, that we hold up to it? So I guess if we have a reporting mechanism in place that will let us know at what stage of delinquency these loans are, despite whatever best faith efforts there are to collect, we still need to know. And I think that has been the disconnect that we don't want to happen again. We need to know whether they're thirty days, sixty days, or ninety days. And then we can come to you and ask, what actions have you taken? Because surely, and from my perspective as a person of color, if one hundred percent of these loans that have gone delinquent are from people who are black entrepreneurs, then there needs to be some nuanced counseling or technical assistance provided. And there are some of us who are cursed enough or blessed enough to have that nuance. So that is my input, is that we always need to know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for that, Dee. Go ahead, Hunter.
Just wanted to agree with Dee and suggest, as was, was pointed out earlier, that the performance delinquencies, delinquency section could be enhanced and collect that data of how delinquent they are such that we can know, know more readily when the charge-offs will likely occur.
Thank you, Hunter. That brings us back to Rachel Sawyer.
Great. I'd like to suggest one more report enhancement. And then I can share the list of the ones that I was making note of. Tim, I heard you say you'd like to carry forward to a future meeting. So just want to make sure that the ideas that have come out so far are safe for us to come back to. So we remember this robust conversation. The suggestion that I'm making for an addition is, if it's not on here, maybe it's further down, is the number and amount of refinanced loans. I don't know if that's a specific trigger built in, but it certainly is something that we talk about quite a bit. And so if there's not concern from other folks, I would add that to the brainstorm list of possible report enhancements. I'm pasting to the chat the suggested enhancements that I heard, which is to change the frequency from quarterly to monthly, add a line item addendum that lists the individual loans and their details, divide the delinquent loans into summarized categories of how long they're past due, add the number and amount of loans for startups, growth or operating capital, as well as the number and amount for refinance loans. Scan to make sure any and all of our other trigger points are reflected and. Scan to make sure any and all of our other trigger points are reflected and, um, list more specific information for other race and ethnicity category. I know Matt at the last meeting was going to take that as a follow-up step. If it could be broken down into more detailed categories, great. And if not, um, explaining what is included within that category. So that's the list for us to come back to.
Great. Thank you, Rachel. Um, so I'd, I'd like committee input on this one. So, you know, I suggested we get together on our next meeting, which will be March second, to kind of review that list as a team, um, to see what we feel strongly about. Um, is that a valid approach? Should we just say that everything we said today is something we want Mountain Biz Works to go look at and come back to us with a response on March second? What's the, how do we feel as a committee?
I would like to have the meeting, Tim. I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand, but I would like to have a meeting, uh, that we could have and talk about the specifics of what we've heard today and put together. Because if you look at our operating agreement, we, it has mentions of triggers, but I don't think we formally as a committee ever went into adopting those triggers and discussing. And now we do have some data to act appropriately, but that's just my opinion. And so I would like to, uh, I, I guess I would like for a committee of us to get together and talk about all of this internally, if you will. Uh, not unless anybody else would just rather come back with feedback on, on, on the next meeting. That, that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Hunter?
I just wanted to ask, uh, Matt, uh, and team if it's, um, if it's not too much trouble to make these additions and or modifications. I think y'all should chime in to, to also just say that it's acceptable, uh, amount of effort to put into these updates or, or if not, how we can come up with some kind of compromise to collect the information that we want to look at.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, um, uh, Hunter. And I think so, so far, I have to look at Rachel's detailed list a little bit more, but I think everything that we've talked about is actually in the backup sheet that has the schedule of all the loans in there already. So it's just a matter of putting them on the summary sheet and having the formulas in there and totaling them up. But then I think it'll also be helpful as we talked about, you know, we, we, we used to provide the committee with that whole schedule. And at one point they're like, yeah, there was a discussion, we, we just want the summary. But I think we, we would, you know, still put that out there. We have that full list. And I think that that could be a valuable tool for the whole committee to have access to that as well. You know, it's got, doesn't have the, has the loan number, but not the client name. So it's, you know, all the confidential information's been removed, but I think that would be really helpful. So then you could, could see on the loan by loan basis as well, should you ever want to.
Thanks, Hunter, Matt. So I think what I'm hearing for an agenda item is BizWorks presenting to the committee, kind of that detailed sheet that Matt just described and that we've heard about. And so we can see that next month. And so that'll allow us to kind of respond to that and see if there's anything missing. Uh, Dee Williams suggested kind of a, a small group meeting in between now and then. Um, is there anybody that would like to join Dee in that discussion? Or Dee, would you be comfortable waiting until after we see the detailed report and then continuing the discussion?
I would be comfortable. I'm amenable to solving problems, Tim. And so I'm amenable to whatever the group would like. Um, but the information piece is the one that we need, uh, to be able to make a decision. So if they will want to put forth a spreadsheet with the annotated data or information we requested, I am happy to wait for that and then offer input at the next meeting. Thank you.
It feels like a, a good compromise. Thank you, Dee. So that'll be the plan unless someone sees it differently. Um, Matt, we'll ask you and your team to share the detailed report with us in advance. We'll post it, um, one week in advance. So everyone has an opportunity to review that. Um, we're on a pretty hyper meeting schedule right now, so we'll need that document next week, uh, just as a note. And we would need to post it by the twenty third, which is a week from today, in order to meet the March first deadline. Um, but it sounds like that's not an issue because it already exists. Based on that, we'll see if there's other items that we need to talk about in terms of additions, modifications, et cetera. Cool. Healthy discussion. We went for an hour. I'm glad we scheduled this one for two. Good job, John Appleby recommending that last time. Um, great. Kelly, if you could send me your comparison file, um, we'll get that posted, um, to, and then we'll move forward.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to move into our next old business item, uh, just to go ahead and set the stage. So we've got two items on the agenda remaining. So one is a discussion of default loans. And so we've kind of talked about the data, but our section where we're going to dig in on the specific claims one by one. In new business, we have a new loan that was brought at the first meeting in February, but we pushed it to this meeting. So if we have time to consider that loan, uh, we should do so. Rachel Sawyer?
Which is more, which has more urgency for the lender?
Uh, that's, that's a good question. I mean, I think this, the borrower really wants to hear on, on the loan. And so I, I kind of feel that, that, that's most important to, to follow through on, to our client there.
I think that's helpful. I'd like some input from the committee. I'm glad to amend the agenda. Are there questions about claims that we feel like could potentially impact our feeling on the loan? I mean, that's a straight up question. And I, I think that's just to put myself out there, I would say, I think this discussion on claims is pretty substantial and something we should do first, uh, personally. But I'm, I'm agreeable to do that however we want to. So.
It's common that, uh, Mountain BizWorks will, uh, close on a loan and hope to be able to bring it, um, into the Mountain Community Capital Fund for that guarantee, uh, retroactively that has occurred in the past. Um, but it sounds like, Matt, what you're describing is that that's not the case in this instance. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I think so. I, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that we've done that in the past, but perhaps we have it. Um, uh, but yeah, I think it would be good to get the, and this is one that requires the committee approval as well. It's over the fifty thousand threshold. Um, so I think it would be a good process to do that.
To clarify, Matt, we've only done it, um, one time whenever we had the, um, the, the contract going to the lawyers and attorneys.
I apologize for my mistake. My misspeak, I was feeling like it had happened more than once, but I did remember it happening.
Yeah, thanks.
Christopher?
No, Yoslin clarified that. I think, I don't need to add anything.
All good. Well, you know, seeing, if no one disagrees, I, I think we stay the course on the way the agenda's been constructed. Um, so, you know, we requested questions, those were shared with BizWorks and the whole committee once compiled. Um, so, you know, we could sort of tackle those questions. Alternatively, we can just coclaim by claim, you know, Kelly can present the first claim. Uh, we can see what questions there are on that claim. Do y'all have any preferences?
Well, Tim, I feel like Kelly went through pretty detailed on each claim last time. So I don't know if we need to go through each claim again. I guess it's really just specific questions for any delinquencies. I know Carl had a couple, like his questions at least.
That sounds good. Um, Dee, what's your, what's your thought?
My question just, it's the third loan, I believe it was, the third, uh, write-off or charge off. They had a category of other and it was stipulated that they were a mixed race person of African-American descent. And I guess white or Hispanic descent mix. Uh, has that, is that, uh, have you changed that category? You know, or is that just an internal representation? Or do we need, need to do something in the operating agreement to where that data is, is stored differently? Cause for me, data is the key to everything. And if I don't know what race or ethnicity somebody is, I can't very well help them. So, uh, that's my question. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just to clarify that, other is one of the options on the client intake form. And that was the option that was selected by this individual. Um, so it's not like they invited something else. That was the one they said best represented their race and ethnicity. So that, that is the fullest amount of data that we have on, on that. Other was provided by the client.
That is not a category that the SBA gives out. And that was my recommendation, Matt, um, respectfully, uh, because we do need to know. There is a, an auditor who has, who is also examining the data. And that, uh, that is the one piece of data that kind of throws everything off. But for us to be able to help and for us to be able to take some nuanced approaches, we need to have a data dashboard that is consistent. So I guess my question is if, if internally you can't do that, uh, is that something that our operating committee or oversight committee needs to do and put into the operating procedures to capture that data so we can have it? Thank you.
I, I think if I could, I'd request that we flag that for discussion. Cause, um, the CDFI, like our CDFI certification has a list, you know, which is separate. It's different from the list that SBA has. So I think there's just, there's multiple different categories here that we've got to work to harmonize and figure out how, because the client can only answer one form. So I think we just, we got to look at that and see what's doable there. We're happy to have that discussion. I think it just, it, it requires a little bit of a deeper dive.
That would be great. Uh, the only reason why I ask is because I know we have so much incomplete information. And I think if it were done differently or nuanced a little bit, we could get better data and we could help people a little bit more. So thanks for that.
You're welcome.
So I'm adding to our next agenda discussion on those demographic categories. And as Matt said, harmonizing the CDFI versus SBA and other requirements. Cool. All right. So then what I'd like to propose, I'm going to pull up my screen. We're going to take a look at the questions that were sent out, um, as I was quickly scanning through. Um, I feel like a lot of these questions have kind of been addressed, some haven't, and some are broader and not claim specific. So actually I'm going to, I'm going to change gears here for a minute. Are there any claim, does anyone have claim specific questions they'd like to review? John, you mentioned Carl, or anyone, are there specific claims like that we want to tackle, um, today?
I, I don't have a question at this time.
Okay, thank you. Dee, your hand came up. Um, was that intentional?
Absolutely. And I'm so sorry. I think I'm terrorizing enough motorists out here. But anyway, uh, my question goes to the refinances. There were two of them, is that correct? And, uh, that is really what my question is about those two claims. Were they delinquent? Which, what was the reason for the refinance? Was it one of existing delinquency and maybe putting some cash flow in to help them? And I'm just talking straight up right now. Or was it because they had a business opportunity that they needed to access? What was the chief reason for the refinances?
May I jump in on and piggyback while you answer on refinances, an additional question? Would that be okay?
Yeah, please.
Um, can, as you explain the refinancing, can you explain how that is treated or applied with the guarantee? Cause there's also a, a refinance in the loan for today that, um, was confusing me as well. Does the original guarantee go away and get replaced? That's just a point of murkiness.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, um, I'm sorry, I can try to get, there's, there's, there's two types of refinances. Um, uh, there's one where we're, um, uh, presenting a loan, uh, for MCCF, where the debt that's being refinanced is kind of non-MCCF. So, uh, it was a loan that was done, uh, outside of MCCF, uh, or, and, and then there's the one like that we're going to be presenting today, where we're, we're looking at adding, uh, giving more financing to an existing company that's already in MCCF. And we believe there's a reasonable case. And so we'll, we'll totally refinance. The old guarantee will go away and it'll all just be rolled up into the new, uh, loan if approved, um, in, in that case. Um, um, so, but anyways, on the, in terms of the claims that are in front of you, one of those claims had a refinance. Um, it's claim number one. Um, and that was discussed and approved, uh, by this, uh, by the operating committee, um, when that loan was made. Um, and, uh, that one, it was a refinance. It was a, it was an expansion opportunity for this client. Um, and, uh, so the committee, uh, approved it, um, at, at that time.
That's helpful clarification on the piece I piggybacked on. So will you explain, was that a refinance of an MCCF or non-MCCF balance?
That one. And claim one, it was, it was a refinance of a non-MCCF balance, but that was really an issue of timing. Uh, it was always expected to be an MCCF loan, but that was like during that period where we had to go back and get the thing reauthorized. Um, and so we went ahead and financed a portion of the project and then brought the full project like a few weeks later when the, the fund was activated. So, um, so it was a matter of a timing, but yeah, technically it was, uh, non-MCCF, but always with the intention that this would be an MCCF loan. And that was all, that was discussed with the committee when that was presented originally.
Thank you for that, Matt. And Matt or Chris, I also saw you raise your hand. Dee had some kind of specific questions.
He, he covered it. That did. That was what I was going to try to clarify. Yep.
And Dee, do you feel like you got what you were looking for in, in that response?
I'm sorry. I'm, uh, I, I pretty much, uh, wanted to know whether some of those loans were refinanced to cover up the fact that they were delinquent or to get those payments up to speed. What, what, uh, and you indicated that they had an opportunity, uh, that presented itself, which, which prompted the refinance. But were these, uh, was the opportunity for expansion due to a contract or something tangible? Or was it through something that the client said? You know, they always sell us stuff. We, I, I, they have always tried to sell me anyway. Uh, so I'm just wondering what prompts that refinance?
Yeah.
What prompted those?
This one, this one was that they had the opportunity to, um, get a, um, very attractive retail location. Um, and that would really, you know, could position their business for, for greater success. Um, and, you know, we had, we had the lease and all that sort of stuff, um, you know, confirmed and validated. So, um, we thought, we thought it made a lot of sense for, and it was a great opportunity for, for the business. So, um, and, and this was, this was the loan that was, you know, it was over fifty. So it was, it was reviewed and, and presented and approved, uh, at the operating committee at that time. Um, and Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the only, um, refinance in, in, uh, the, the, the set of claims, is that correct? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Right. Um, any other loan specific or claim specific questions? All right. So what I'm going to do, what I propose, um, I'd like to quickly, I'm going to pull up my screen. I'm going to share the questions that we provided. And what I'd like to do is just kind of quickly walk through with the committee. Some of these questions, I think we've already addressed today. And I think some of these questions could be potentially addressed in the future, since they're not claim specific. But I want to make sure that we don't gloss over anything. Um, once we've done that, I'd like to kind of get through that in the next ten minutes, if possible. Um, I'd like to transition to the claims review or the claims procedure. And the, the claims procedure that we'll be taking today is going to go claim by claim. So we're, I'm going to ask Kelly to raise, uh, the first claim. And then I'm going to seek a motion from this committee, um, on that claim. And, you know, it's basically going to be, we approve the claim and then we're going to vote on it. So, you know, motion, second vote. And for these claims to be approved, we'll have to go through each of that, each, those steps for each. So we're going to have five votes on claims. Uh, just to give you an understanding of procedure. Um, so if there are specific claims questions that would prevent you from voting, now is the time to kind of get those out on the table is kind of my point. Um, so we'll get to that in just a minute. I'm going to share my screen hopefully. And then we will go from there. All right. And like I said, um, I'm going to try to move through this pretty quickly. If I'm moving too quickly, y'all stop me and we'll spend some time. Um, all right. So everyone should see my screen. I'm assuming you can still hear. All right. So everyone should see my screen. I'm assuming you can still hear me. There's a good discussion here on trigger points. I think we've talked about this today. And I think we've agreed, as Dee suggested, sort of looking at this more closely, but we're going to delay that until after we have a chance to review the detailed report provided by the Mountain Bizburgs team. Similarly, early notification. We spoke about the age of delinquencies and being more transparent on that, which I think will assist with this. Carl has mentioned the need for startup. Additional details about the loans, whether they're startups, et cetera. I believe Rachel captured that in her notes. Thank you. A loan review, I think this is kind of a really smart idea. I forget who suggested it, you know, and maybe we can talk in our next meeting, you know, once something gets to like 90 days or 120 days, maybe there's additional discussion at the committee level. I do think that's a good future discussion, not necessarily something that would impact our claims discussion today. There's a healthy number of questions on the liquidation of assets. And so this gets to, once we're in default and there's a chargeback, what are the steps that would be taken by Kelly and team to make sure that we are liquidating assets and being a good steward of these funds in the Mountain Community Capital Fund? I would ask if anyone would like to discuss this further. This is something claims related, in my opinion. Are there any questions?
Tim, I'm happy to just give like a brief summary of how I approach that, if that would be beneficial.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I should have clarified it last time. So I think it's a really good question on the liquidation of assets, on how we approach that. And to be really clear, once, as soon as they become delinquent, even before we know what the collateral is on it, in making a determination of if we liquidate that collateral, it's quite simply, we assess the value of it and we assess that by going back to the original loan. Depending on what the collateral is, I pull values from, you know, usually at least three resources so that I can determine, I'll give a for example that'll make sense. For example, if we have a piece of a collateral that was worth, let's say $5,000 when we did the loan originally, and we think that's what it's worth and into the loan, if we look at it and I go out and physically see it and we can determine that we're not going to be able to get the full 5,000 out. Maybe we can only get, you know, a couple thousand out of it. If the cost to pay a company to go back and repossess it, bring it back, store it, if we have to do any repairs on it, approach it the same way with the SBA. Is the net recovery that we get from any liquidation of assets has to be positive? If it's not going to be positive, then I'm not a good steward with the fund to bring it to you. Because what I would be doing is bringing you unnecessary expenses on the account. And that's the situation with the four of these claims. One of them, we went as far as getting a judgment, because I do think there's possible in the future that we could get a recovery from those judgments. The other ones were mostly home based businesses and there were really no assets to get. And when to explain a little bit with that is, if you have a home based business, the majority of the time, they are not going to have a lot of assets there. They may have a computer or printer or something like that. And so the cost of going to get that, storing it and selling it, marketing, you're just not going to get the recovery on it, any meaningful recovery there. So but I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has questions on that.
Maybe Kelly just touched bullet, bullet three there as well.
Oh, absolutely. We have, we treat every loan exactly the same. And probably, I wouldn't say more so with the guarantee program. But just to give an example, any claim that I submit to the SBA, they are so picky. They want to know that we've, that we've jumped on the account immediately. We've assessed collateral. You know, have we, have we serviced it any way differently than any other, the portfolio? So I do want to really emphasize the practice. We, we do not treat these any differently just because they have a guarantee. We would not, I mean, ethically, I couldn't do it. I couldn't bring you a loan and just say, hey, we have a guarantee, we're not going to go after the collateral. That's not what we're here for. So, you know, we, we treat the entire portfolio the same.
That's fair. Thank you, Kelly and Matt for that. Committee, any additional questions or comments on this? All right, I'm going to proceed. Reporting, you know, I think this has come through loud and clear today, no need to focus there. Refinancing, I think, you know, this is a philosophical question that Dee Williams has brought up over the years. Is there anything we need? I feel like we've talked about this. Do we need to continue the discussion? It doesn't feel loan specific to me, so I'd like, I'd like to continue and just table it otherwise. Yep, there's a question here about collateral for the loans. I think this is worth just talking about, Matt and team, because we do have a new loan for consideration today. And this is core to that question, I think.
Yeah, I think the spirit of the fund really is to help make financing available to borrowers that don't, have a lack of a personal ability to provide collateral and other support to the business. So, so, yeah, I think these, these, these loans by nature, and that's the reason that this guarantee support is there to be a type of collateral support in those situations where there is less collateral than we would normally look, look for a loan. So so MCCF is absolutely, I mean, that's, that's a key part of its function. And I think in general, the loans that you'll see, the loans and the funds will have, you know, less collateral.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Please, John.
So based off your answers, so the only difference between a non-MCCF guaranteed loan and a, and an MCCF guaranteed loan is essentially the collateral? There's no other, are there other criteria that you guys look at to discern whether it gets guaranteed or not guaranteed, other than the lack of collateral?
Yeah, so MCCF is really there to, for businesses that we think are good businesses. And there's an ability to repay. But some of those secondary supports that we would normally look to, whether it's collateral, whether it's owner's outside income, whether it's the ability for, you know, family investment or owner's investment into the project. So there's a deficiency in some of those that we, what we find particularly a lot in our kind of lower wealth, you know, entrepreneurs, that we wanted to expand the credit box so they have more access. So this tool really supports that. And so it could be any range of those things, collateral is a big one, but also that, you know, outside income and owner's investment, you know, lack for them to, you know, put 20% into a project, you know, that we might normally see. The MCCF can help expand the, the, the credit box in those situations.
Yeah, thank you. So basically, my question goes to what these loans are used for. If they, if they buy collateral, the UCC is taken out on these assets. If they're hard assets that are purchased with the loan proceeds, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we had one who, who took, from what I remember, some of the assets that were bought and transferred them over to another municipality. Approximately, and I guess that would have to go over to the next discussion when that happened. It looks like he or she is operating in that municipality with the assets and the, that were bought, either working capital and/or assets that were bought with our guarantee. Is that correct? And pretty much there was no action taken against him or her because he was in a, in another municipality across the state line. Is that right?
So this is, this is claim number one. In this case, there was collateral in the location that we thought was worth pursuing. And, and so we went, got it successfully got a judgment so that we would be able to do that during that process. You know, of course, there's notification that's provided, you know, to the borrower along that. The borrower organized another LLC, transferred, you know, opened a shop in a different part of the state, transferred the assets into that. So we would have to go, you know, kind of restart the whole process over there. And we were not able to get our eyes on the, on the new location. It's no longer, it's no longer open either. So and the nature of the collateral was, was a type that it was kind of borderline whether we'd be able to get a recovery on it anyways. And so, yeah, it just, it became, we've, we've, we do have the judgment in place still on, on, on that particular borrower. We pursued to the fullest extent that we thought was practical. And we would just be throwing, you know, there was, there was a good chance we'd be losing more money on the collections that we'd get back. So good question.
Good, thanks.
All right. Thank you all. Moving forward into discussion on demographics, I think we've talked about this today. You know, in terms of the different categories that have been proposed and the need to continue that discussion at our next meeting. So I think that is all something we will talk about at a future meeting. And then I think we've got, this was the official document, but I do think we have. No, this is good. More discussion on trigger points, which I think is something for the future. And then analysis of our loan portfolio, again, looking at kind of where we are with the portfolio, the demographics of delinquencies, things of that nature. I think this is all something we discussed today and recognize is something that needs to, to be revisited. So all right, y'all, those are the questions that we have. Any, anybody have anything they'd like to add before I drop my screen and move on from this section? All right, I stopped sharing. Cool. So back to our agenda. The next item, we're still under old business. And specifically, we're discussing questions related to the default loans. Our next steps here, I alluded to it earlier. Each claim requires a vote to be approved. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like, shortly, I'd like Kelly to bring up her screen and we'll go claim by claim. For each claim, need a motion to approve the claim or deny the claim. And then we will need a second. And then we will need a vote for each claim. Rachel and Carl?
I'm happy for you to go first, Carl, unless you're making a motion.
No, go ahead, Rachel.
I'm trying to find the, the note from the last meeting. It actually might have been from a subgroup meeting. So I'm thinking about what does approving these do to our overall amount available in the fund? And I'm wondering if anyone has calculated that, given all of our just activity to the fund, meaning we had the initial city and county money, we had Dougwood money, ARPA money, fees, some changes to the fund, and now it will be reduced by the amounts, the $116,000 total looks like. Where does that leave us in total?
Yeah, it would be reduced by 116. And then Kelly, I don't have your amended report right in front of me, but I think you could take the, the max guarantee capacity and reduce it by that 116,000. So it would just, it would.
Look at the quarterly report from December and look for the.
That's right, that's right. But I think it's good just to remember that, you know, we, the MCCF reserves 100% of the guarantee commitment for every loan that's enrolled, you know, in the fund. So, so even after this, every guarantee that's in the fund has 100% of its guarantee reserved in the fund. So there'll be no impact to those kind of other commitments that the fund has. It will reduce, of course, the fund's ability, once those funds are paid out, you know, to guarantee another claim in the future because those funds won't be there.
Thank you for that.
And I have a question. Are we voting? What are we voting on? Are we voting to approve or disapprove the guarantee?
We are.
And can we vote to not approve the guarantee? We've committed to this and this is, and they've gone belly up. So I'm confused what we're doing here.
Sure. No, I think you nailed it. I mean, we are, we are voting to approve or disapprove the claim, which is the guarantee. I concur. We have, we agreed on the front end to guarantee these loans. However, there is, if there's some reason where we feel like the lender has not done their due diligence to uphold sort of their part of the bargain, if you will, with, you know, how they under, did their underwriting or something technical, then there's the possibility we could deny the, the claim. Absence some type of negligence, Carl, I think our, our role is to approve those. Does that answer your question, Carl, before I get to do?
It sort of does. You know, this goes back to the fundamental notion of what are we voting on when we vote to approve a loan? You know, we're, we're basically saying that, you know, we don't have the knowledge to, to ensure that this is a solid loan because it's redacted, because it's a public meeting. And now they're, they need to be funded from our commitment, and I get that. I guess the only question for me is, we have had zero line of sight on any of these. Well, side for one and a half, I guess. And so it's, it seems a little bit of a cram down, but I get that, you know, I guess it's not intentional and I get it's not negligence. It's, it is what happened, but it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I would, I would point to just two additional things, you know, to, I think, in reading that, you know, the process, to look at that the eligible losses, you know, are presented and substantiated and how that allocation of losses between the lender and the fund is there in each claim. And, and yet to the, you know, that the loan servicing, you know, was provided by the lender, you know, within, to a reasonable standard.
And Dee, before we come your way, I just want to note that I've, I've asked Michael Frew to adjoin us. Y'all should remember Michael from our last meeting. He's a senior attorney here at Buncombe County. He walked us through kind of like our role in our last meeting. But, you know, have him here again today in case there's additional specific legal questions. Michael, we were just talking about the role of this committee. And, you know, we voted on the front end to have a guarantee. At this point, there's an, there's a request for claims. And so what would be the basis of us denying a claim? And
Let me pull this up. I believe only if the committee found that the lender did not accurately follow its procedures in attempting to collect on the default or to make good on that loan. I think it had to be a process failure on their side.
Thank you, Michael. So Dee, your hand was raised. Carl, you had kind of asked that question. I don't know if that provides additional clarity or confusion, but.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That is clarification. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Dee?
Yeah, thank you. And so I guess we have to all be culpable. And that has been my argument here all along. I don't think there's been any lapse on the part of the lender. I think the lapse in disconnect is when these loans are brought to us that we may not have had sufficient leeway or enough information. And basically, when we talked about earlier, when we first started out, our roles were considered, this committee's role was considered one of not so much of being responsible for the loan, but letting the lender pretty much wholly decide that. the lender pretty much ho- wholly decide that. And it was like, uh, we were a, a group that came along and pretty much rubber stamped it. So I think the roles have been delineated for the first time since I've been on this committee. And I've been here ever since its inception. This is the first time I've ever seen this committee operate in the manner in which most so-called lending or oversight committees operate. This is my first experience. So, uh, in saying that, I don't think we have a legal leg to stand on to even, I guess we can vote as a, for the formality of it, but certainly we voted, or the majority of us voted for every loan that has ever come before us. I don't think we've denied a loan yet. So I don't see why we even have to, I guess legally, we do have to go through the motions of voting and approving, but certainly we did approve every one. So in good faith, we need to go ahead and just, uh, award these funds for the guarantee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Rachel Sawyer.
Thanks for those comments, Dee. Um, I, I agree with many of those sentiments. I was just looking at these claims and based on the amounts, maybe only one would have come to us, which would be claim number one, because the other ones appear to maybe be within the threshold that the lender is able to approve on their own without coming to the committee. So that further puts us in a situation, you know, this would be the first time that we're learning about the details of the loan at its, at its point of charging claim. Um, so with that being said, the explanation, Kelly, that you provided in the narrative summary of the activities to try to, um, collect the past due payments and recover collateral is, it's helpful. Can someone fact check me that we would have seen and approved just one of these five?
Yeah. And, you know, just a little bit of history, you know, this, this, that was a healthy discussion, uh, while we kicked off the fund in the beginning, you know, what, how nimble did we want the lenders to be? You know, were there thresholds where this oversight would need to be provided? Um, that's something we can obviously talk about in the future, but, uh, was a conscientious decision. So, with that said, um, are there any questions from the committee on process? Okay. If there's no questions, we're going to go one by one. Kelly, I would ask you to, to raise claim number one for us, please. And Kelly, if you could just quickly summarize the, the amount of the claim that's being requested.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead and state the account number two. So we just have that on record. So claim number one is for, um, two loans to the same client. Excuse me. The loan number is one three nine eight oh three oh two and one three nine eight oh five oh one. Um, requested payout on that for eligible claims. The claim total is sixty one thousand three oh one, sixty one three oh one dot zero zero.
Thank you. And Kelly, could you quickly summarize the actions taken by Bizworks to collect on this delinquent loan?
Sure. This is the one that we did get a judgment. Um, it was the same client that had, um, was in Buncombe County and left to Inabreen County. So we, um, attempted to try to get the collateral from the client, was unable to do so. We went through our local attorney, filed a legal action, and was awarded a judgment, um, in both counties that the, um, entity exists, um, and against him personally. So, um, there's, to match point, there's, there was nothing else that we could do at that point. It would cost us more money to keep litigation efforts at that point. So we deemed it at that point uncollectible.
Thank you, Kelly. And those costs associated with litigation are documented in the, the table here.
Yes, sir.
Under professional fees, costs and expenses.
Yes. Yeah, the professional fees was five thousand three twenty eight and the cost and expenses was three, three sixty two ninety two.
Thank you for that. All right. So Kelly has summarized for us the, the requested claim as well as actions taken to recover, um, against that delinquent loan. Are there any questions? If there's no questions, request a motion to, uh, either approve or deny this claim.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the claim.
Is there a second?
My second, Carl.
Thank you. Uh, the motion is to approve the claim as presented. Um, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Please lower your hands. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the claim is approved. Kelly, we're going to move to claim two. If you could just kind of follow that same pattern that we went through last time, that'd be great.
Sure. Claim number two is for lender loan number two five seven eight zero one zero one. The, um, claim amount that we're requesting eligible losses is thirteen thousand four four three sixty eight. That's one three four four three point sixty eight. Um, this, the actions taken to this one is we provided or attempted to provide, um, post loan closing or post loan coaching, um, and work with the client. Um, the client was in cooperative, um, post loan. Um, they had actually approached us for additional funding. This is an example to where we were not able to provide additional funding because they were not working with us to provide us any financial information. And so, um, at that point, we also looked at the collateral. This is a situation to where, um, there's really no collateral for us to go and get. Um, it was in transportation, um, but the only UCC would cover, just like the, the basic access, assets. So there's nothing really for us to go and get to have a positive recovery.
Are there any questions related to claim two? Do we have a motion to approve or deny this claim?
I move to approve.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
You're good. We have a motion and a second to approve this claim for thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. If you are in favor, please raise your hand. Please lower your hands. Any, any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Claim three, Kelly.
Claim three is for loan number two six two seven zero one zero one. Claim amount on that, the net eligible losses is seven thousand eight seventy-six fifty-two seven eight seven six point five two. Um, this is a situation, uh, it was a home-based business. The client was very cooperative. Uh, it's an unfortunate situation to where the client had a, um, health issue that ended up from a treatment that is really, um, but where they cannot work. Very sad situation. Um, they were very cooperative. Um, there's no assets yet. It was a home-based business there. So there's nothing that we can actually liquidate to get any positive net recovery.
Thank you, Kelly. Are there any questions on claim three? Do we have a motion to approve or deny this claim?
I saw move to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Please lower your hands. Any opposed? Motion carries. Claim number four.
Uh, claim number four is loan number two five four eight zero one zero one. Um, the, um, requested claim payment eligible losses on that one is seven thousand eight fifty-three twenty-seven eight five three point two zero. Pardon me? Was there a question there?
I don't think so, Kelly. You can present.
Okay. Um, this is when, um, pre-loan, they were cooperative and post-loan, they were not cooperative. Um, they also had, um, wanted to get some additional funding that we were not able to do. Um, this is a situation where I did go out, view the collateral. We did have a DMV titled collateral on it. Um, and we would have lost money if we had hired someone to go out and do the repossession, um, did any repairs to it. There's no way we would have, it would have cost us more to repossess it than we would have netted any recovery on that. Um, and I think I just went over the, the request of payout on that one, seven thousand eight fifty-three twenty.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions on claim four? Go ahead, Dee.
Deed?
Yep.
All right. Pardon me, please. Uh, there, just for clarification, this was a vehicle, is that correct?
Yeah, it was a, it wasn't a vehicle that had a motor in it. They drove, it was a pull behind trailer source, I guess. Is that, I can't hear too much, but, um,
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay. And so this piece of equipment was malfunctioning? Is that what I gather? Which is why repossession or taking it back would have not been fortuitous? Is that what that was? Or what, what was the reason specifically?
And to clarify, as far as why we didn't go pick it up, is-
Yeah.
We, yeah, we didn't pick it up, um, because of the value of it. It was a very low value item. Um, I do think part of it was obviously not going to be working. Um, and it just would not made sense for us to go and get it. I think as far as the loan itself, um, they needed something more than that to be able to, to support the business model of the route that they were wanting to go. Um, does that answer the question, Dee?
Not really. I, I, I'm one, I'm trying to see, when you made the loan, I guess they had cash flows, pro formas or whatever, but it looks like what they bought was, was this a fully depreciated asset? What was the asset value? Did it come up to the seventy-eight fifty-three or was for some of it working cap? What was the intent?
I would have to go back and look this, this-
Oh, I'm sorry. I did too technical. I do apologize. Anyway.
Chris from I could speak to that. I don't think it would have valued, um, after I saw it. And there's no way it would value. I don't think it's seven thousand.
Was it, was it fully depreciated prior to loan? Or was this asset purchased with any of the loan proceeds? I'm trying to understand.
To my knowledge, I do not think it was, um, Chris speaking, because I do not think it was purchased as for the proceeds.
Uh, I, again, I'm trying to open up the file, but I do believe the asset was purchased with it, but it was no, where there was working capital, Dee, part of the loan. The value of the asset was not substantial in terms of the loan amount. I mean, like a hundred percent of the loan amount was for the equipment. The, uh, and then the equipment as to being fully depreciated, uh, that's more of an accounting question that he would-
Yeah.
-deal with. Um, but the, the equipment, he had disassembled portions of it, was trying to retrofit it. And ultimately Kelly made the assessment that the cost of re-acquiring that or repossessing it would be more expensive than what we could actually get if we tried to then sell something that had been basically broken apart in various pieces.
Got it. So what I'm ascertaining, and I'll cease after this, is that this client, um, looks like somebody, what I used to call one of my creatives, uh, retrofiting equipment all along the path. And probably, I guess, the, when y'all saw it, everything had gone down pretty much. Is that what I surmised? With the equipment, the retrofit, the adjustments, all of that, and then the money, this was working capital pretty much, as I gather. Is that correct?
I mean, it, there was a lot of work with this individual, Dee, over the period of years. And to, to kind of package it up in something that's very succinct would not fairly convey everything. I mean, it, it just didn't work. And I, you know, um, I'd love to have a discussion with you just about-
That's fine.
-for people, but I don't, I don't know how to summarize it for you beyond it, it, you know, the asset wasn't worth repossessing and the client, we couldn't, we, we tried our best to support him, but couldn't do it going forward. And it just didn't, you know, yeah. We, we really tried. Let me put it that way.
I understand. I understand. I'm good. Thank you. Maybe some other time. Appreciate.
Yeah. Thank you. Great question, though.
All right. Any other questions on claim four? Do we have a motion to approve or deny the claim?
Mercifully, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve, uh, the guarantee for this loan.
I second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Please lower your hands. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion is approved. Claim number five.
Claim number five is for lender loan number two five six seven zero one zero one. The net amount requested is twenty-five thousand nine sixteen seventy-two. That's two five nine one six point seven two. Um, and just like the other ones, this is very similar to you. The other one is a home-based business. There was no collateral for us to go and liquidate with it being a home-based business. Um, client was very cooperative pre-loan, um, and pretty much goes to this post loan. And so, um, we were not able to work out anything with them. And there was no assets to go and pick up to net any recovery from liquidation.
I was on mute. My apologies. Questions? Do we have a motion to approve or deny?
I saw move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claim for twenty-five nine sixteen seventy-two.
Who is the second, please?
I'll take the second.
Hunter. Or Tim.
Got it.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Or please raise, lower your hands. Any opposed? All right. The claim passes. All right. Thank y'all for getting, getting through that. Michael Fru, appreciate your, your support along the way from a legal perspective. Um, first time we've had to do this. Um, hopefully we don't get to do it on a regular basis. Before we close, I'm, we've still got a, a new loan to consider. I know we need to get the public comment, but a few things that I was noting as we were talking about these five claims in terms of trends, and I think it's something we need to talk about moving forward. Um, you know, four out of five of these loans had no visibility from this committee, um, before approval because of the loan threshold. So that's just a, a thing. Um, additionally, a lot of these businesses were home-based businesses. And, you know, I'm not making a negative statement. I'm just reflecting on kind of what we, what we heard today. Um, and, and many of these businesses, because they were home-based or for other reasons, really had no collateral, um, that we could collect, or rather, there were no assets to collect, um, at time of default. So just a trend, I think something we should kind of talk about a little bit more, just to see if there's anything we can prevent as we move forward. Um, just wanted to recognize those items. Any quick thoughts on those claims, claim process, before we move to the next? All right. We're moving into new business. Um, we've got 10 minutes. Um, if we need to take more time or if we need to delay, we can also do that, um, if it's the committee. Rachel Sawyer?
You might've just said this and I was distracted. Now that we've approved it, can you or someone explain the process of how it will be paid out? Like does, not BizWorks now have the authority to bill Self Help Ventures Fund?
Yeah, that's a great, great question, Rachel. Probably good for the committee to inform Self Help that these claims have been approved for payment. And then we can defer to Self Help and see if they need any other, anything else. If they just sit in the claim form and then they disperse it, or if there's anything else they need.
Karen, you're on the call. Anything you'd like to add? Should we discuss? Karen, if you're talking, you're on mute. We'll table that for Karen, John, your hands up.
Yeah, just real quick, if there's, the loans below the fifty thousand, is there, can we add a line item to the report that shows the delineation between the number of lines that are below fifty and that one number that are over fifty?
To the quarterly slash monthly report?
Yeah.
Adding it to the list.
Go ahead, Dee.
Thank you, can we also add to the list whether we need to review these loans or that are beyond, below threshold? Whether in our operating agreement or whatever we need to do? Can you add that to the list, please? Thank you.
Karen, I just responded, Karen, the, the general question was next steps with the claims in terms of what Self Help will need in terms of documentation, if anything additional. How those claims will be paid out, sort of that whole process.
Yeah, so this is actually a question I sort of had for you all, so there is a claims form, and so we will just need that form that comes from, you know, that says that the operating committee has approved payout of this amount for the claim. The question that I had was that right now, the way it was structured, the payment would be proportionally paid out for each claim from the county and city funds. Now, as you know, the agreement has not been updated to account for the fact that there are also Dogwood Health Trust Funds and now additional funds from Mountain Biz Works related to the ARCA funds. So I think that's something for the operating committee to determine whether it is still just proportionally from this original city and county loan funds or whether it is proportionally from all four buckets, and I don't really know how to. We can do proportionally at the moment as to what is in the balances based on the funds from Mountain Biz Works. I don't know what that amount will ultimately be, but we have the original amounts from the other three entities.
Got it. Thank you, Karen, that's going to need some discussion, so.
Will that mean that Self Help Ventures Fund is not able to pay out until that discussion occurs?
Yeah, we need to know how, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it is all in one, the same pot of money. I can talk to our finance team and see if we can first pay and then allocate. Them that.
My suggestion would be to follow what's in our current operating agreement, even though we know it's outdated. And allocate the loss proportionally to the city and the county. We have process in the works with city and county attorneys to get those operating documents updated. It's likely that it will say any losses will be proportionally shared by all. But we don't have that yet, so based on what we have currently approved is, makes sense to me as to what to follow that way, Self Help is able to proceed and make the payout.
I agree with Rachel, it's our governing, yeah, Dee's nodding as well.
Yeah, that, that, that's all I would say, Tim, I agree with what Rachel and what you're saying. I don't think Dogwood was even in the, in the house when, when these things went into default, thank you.
Yep, so I think we got to go with the current documents, Karen, if you have an issue with that, please let us know. As, my ask for Matt Raker and team would be for y'all to populate the claims form. If you've not already done so. And then if you'll provide those to me, I can serve as the go-between with Karen so that they're coming through the committee chair and then to Self Help. Okay?
Yeah, that's great, I think, I think what they were submitted and were part of the meeting materials at the last meeting on, for each individual claim. But just, just let us know, we can shoot those over again, but if there's something else you need there, just listen.
Yeah, I wonder if that same form that's in the February two packet.
Yep, Matt, if you could send me kind of like, just a clean, here's the, here's where. Great. Other questions before we move to new business? We do not have a lot of time, y'all, we've got four minutes. For those that are voting members that ask, you know, do we have another ten or fifteen minutes? That we can extend this meeting to kind of continue? Are we going to lose anybody?
I'm going to start to transition, but I'll try to participate by phone, but I, but I do have an offsite eleven thirty that I'll need to boogie for, but I'll try to be here as long as I can.
Okay, let's get into the discussion, see how far we can go.
I cannot stay, who can volunteer to take minutes?
You're.
Unfortunately, I also have to go to a meeting at eleven for ABI, so I cannot stay.
I can take minutes if that's required.
Thank you, I've already summarized some information about the loan that is going to be presented, so the main thing to capture is any discussion. And then if there's any action, do pay attention on quorum, Frank has already left and it will be out. So that leaves Dee, John, Hunter, Carl, Nikki, maybe, and Tim at the time of the vote, I'd have to, I don't actually know what our quorum number is. I assume it's five, because that's in the, so just pay attention for five voters.
Sounds good, any, before we get into this, I know I'm wasting time, Nikki, can we get somebody to follow through on this? And like, let's just hold, and if we can hold a vote, or we're going to have to move it to the next meeting, like.
Let's see if we, if we can, next fifteen minutes, and I think I should be okay, so maybe if we can keep it to fifteen, does that sound good?
Let's do it.
Okay.
All right, so we have one new loan for consideration, Yaslin. If you could present the loans, that would be great.
Yes, so I will summarize a lot of it just for the sake of time, and then Christopher Murray, he's our chief credit officer, is actually on the call as well. And he's worked directly with the client, so he's here to provide just additional information or answer any additional questions that the committee may have. So I will just kind of go over some key details here. So we've got the transportation-based business, it's located in the city of Asheville. This is an existing business since twenty twenty one. The total loan amount requested is ninety five thousand dollars. It will be used, so here's a little bit of breakdown of the use of funds. So this is, it, this is a refinance, it, it has been in a, an existing, MCCF backed loan. So the amount of fifty one thousand has already, is already backed for, as, under MCCF. So the renew money would be forty three, three forty, so the total loan amount would be ninety five. We will have a first position lien on a commercial truck valued at fifty thousand, which is that cost. The term is eighty four months of PNI, so total payment is one thousand three hundred forty two dollars and seventy two cents. The credit score here is six eighty one. They have no bank, no collections, bankruptcies. They have improved their credit since inception and the original loan. They, one thing I want to note is the client currently is in a past due status in the existing loan due to a physical injury, which he has not recovered. There was also some equipment failure, which made him fall behind. They, that being said, the client has been communicative and transparent and has worked closely with Mountain Biz Works, has taken the, the steps towards technical assistance and receiving that technical assistance as well. And so one job retained. Again, the client has received five plus hours in coaching in various areas of business, like payroll, taxes, finance and marketing assistance. So the request is for the max guarantee, which is seventy thousand. I did add other comments here about the client. And so the, the experience the client has, has been in the industry, in, in the transportation industry over eight years. Originally started working with two dollies and a pickup truck. Then in twenty twenty one, we did a loan for him to purchase another truck. And in twenty, since inception, the client hasn't been able to produce significant income and was not consistent income. So a quick update since September of twenty twenty three. He was working about four days out of every fourteen days on a two-week period. They were able to generate sixteen thousand two seventy seven revenue, so about four thousand sixty nine dollars a month. The break even point is around seventy five hundred, so as of September, he was not able to reach break even. So the, the request here is to purchase a larger vehicle, which will allow him to bid on more routes and increase his price per mile from a dollar twenty three to two dollars and sixteen cents. So over, so essentially the client, the truck that the client has now is just not suitable for the client's needs. So he right, currently has an eighteen-foot truck, the requested will be purchasing a twenty-four-foot truck. And we have created a projection model. See if I can make this a little bit bigger. Over the years, so there's really no historical revenue due to, again, the, the injury and equipment failure of the client. So since.
Can you zoom in one more time, Yaslin? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Oops, okay. So for this year, so twenty four through twenty five, the projected revenue is ninety six thousand. You can see the breakdown here of the expenses and the cost of goods sold. The operating income before taxes is twenty four thousand, so the debt service is, is in there, the existing debt service, so total debt service projected for the client would be nineteen thousand four four six with the new additional funds that we would be doing, at least for the first year. Yes, Dee?
Does he have a contract? A government or other contract guarantee revenue, or no?
There is no guarantee, there's no contract in place, no.
Okay, so what is this, based on the break even point, what is his debt ratio to that break even point? What, what is his allocation or outlay for debt every month? What, what of that seventy five hundred, what is this, what are those total expenses for debt? And I'm curious about that, does he still offer that broken down truck? Or is he going to sell it, or what, what's going to happen, I guess, is what I'm looking at.
So let me pause here, and I will bring in Christopher, he has more details on this request.
Because it doesn't sound like this gentleman or lady or whoever this is is generating enough revenue. It kind of bothers me, I'm just going to be very frank with you, that's all there is to it. And he doesn't have a standing contract either for, for, for income, so yeah, go ahead, I'm fine.
Dee, great questions. Yeah, as to his monthly debt service, it's, you know, the nineteen thousand four forty six divided by twelve and you know, so of that seventy five hundred, that would be the portion that his payments to Mountain Biz Works would, would equal. As to a contract, the bulk of his business will be over the road carrying and those are not normally contract relationships, they can be. Most of them come from broker-type situations. And so his big challenge has been that the vehicle, the truck that he has is eighteen foot and the vast majority of loads are done with twenty-six-foot trucks. It's not because the eighteen-foot truck can't necessarily fit everything in it. It has to do predominantly with the size of the actual opening. A twenty-six-foot truck, people can take a forklift in with like a refrigerator and, and fit it in there, and so he's been very limited in the number of bids that he can get. And so he came to us having already acquired his truck and we refinanced that truck. And then through, you know, a series of really unfortunate things from, you know, damage to the vehicle, physical stuff. He, he got to where he was in struggle city. And he started communicating with us, with Kelly and I, early last year about, hey, I'm thinking maybe I really need to move to a different type of truck. So we started to explore that with him, he decided to keep trying to make the eighteen-foot one work. You know, was dealing with some injuries and breakdowns back in the fall, he relaunched. And, you know, wasn't able to hit his break even point based upon kind of the business that he could get with the eighteen footer. And then in December, reached out to me and said, hey, Christopher, now's the time, I got to do this, or I just think it's going to be almost impossible for me to make this business scale to work. And so that's where we wrestled internally, okay, is this something that we should do despite the fact that he has struggled? He has been a, a beautiful example of communicating transparently and being accountable. And so despite his past due status, which, you know, we've been, you know, have lived with for the, you know, past quarter. We feel like this is a, an opportunity that we should take. The risk that your, your committee or the fund would be taking is essentially an increase of twenty seven thousand five hundred over and above your existing guarantee. And Mountain Biz Works would be taking an increase of twenty five thousand, so we're not trying to offload a bunch of risk onto the fund. We're taking on a good bit of risk over and above what the guarantee would provide. So it's, you know, something that we believe is justified, given, you know, the way that we've worked with him and.
So he's ninety days past due?
He is, let me, let me address that, Dee, because that's a, kind of it jumps out at you. You know, rather than what we can do in, when it makes sense, is refinance a note internally by making them pay the interest current. That's kind of a business practice within lending. So that, but we decided in this case that we didn't want to do that because we felt like it might obscure the situation in a way that maybe you didn't, you know, be able to sense the whole picture, so we didn't do that, Dee. And so he made a payment, he's made two payments really in the last four that were full payments. And so we could have put it on interest only, that he could have made those payments. But again, we wanted you to be able to kind of see the full picture and not feel like we were trying to obscure something and so, but that is true. And, you know, despite that fact, we recommend, you know, this increase.
I guess it probably would have shown up if we had that spreadsheet that we'd asked for. It looks like this one would be on the, the delinquency spreadsheet, the ninety days spreadsheet.
I don't, that's a Kelly question, I think. I think technically as of September thirtieth, that quarterly one, I don't think it would have been it, uh, on that. I may, Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong because of the way we had been working with him. But, so, this isn't one that I think from earlier in the year was, Kelly can address that. But, um, so, I mean, the point-
He was in the delinquent list on the current report.
Yeah.
He is in the delinquent list on the current, on the current report. We don't have that current report, do we? We don't have that.
The twelve twenty-one that, uh, one that Kelly presented at the opening of this call. That's, yeah, it's on that one.
So, he is, he is on this list, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick question about the four days out of fourteen. Is that because they didn't win any bids for the truck or?
Yeah, great question, because that really is the heart of the matter in terms of the business model, John. He, you know, because he, he can't win enough contracts because of the limitation of his vehicle. It's really that simple. I mean, and I've been on the phone directly with the brokers. And, you know, with a twenty-six-foot truck, that opens up another hundred opportunities per week for him to win, to win, to win the bid. And he's really developed great relationships with the, with the people that put out the bids. But he can't get it because it's a, I mean, they will not hire someone with an eighteen-foot truck. I, it's that simple and I, you know, so-
Well, begs the question why he bought the smaller truck in the first place, if he knows the industry so well?
You know, he came to us with the truck having financed, uh, you know, having financed that separately. As to, uh, you know, that decision. You know, you know, his transportation history, you know, wasn't exclusively for over the road. You know, so, I, I, I don't, I can't give you an answer as to John, as to, you know, why he bought an eighteen-foot versus a twenty-six. So-
Does he still, I'm sorry, does he still owe for that eighteen-foot truck?
Yeah, so, the, what would happen here is, is he would sell that, uh, that would get applied to the balance of the loan. So, um, uh, um, so the ninety-five thousand is net of what we think that that prop, that truck will bring versus the new amount. So, um, uh, it's a, uh, so yes, it would be sold and, 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 and applied to the loan.
Does he have any personal assets?
He does not.
He does not own another, a personal vehicle? None of that?
As to a personal vehicle, um, I have to go pull up the file. He may have a personal vehicle. I don't, but I don't have that information right in front of me, Dee.
Okay, thank, and let me ask you, have you looked at his tax returns? What are those indicative? What is his net income? He does a Schedule C, is that right? Or is he an LLC? What does he do?
He would be a, probably a Schedule C because you can file as a Schedule C if you're a single member LLC.
Okay, so he's a single member LLC?
Right, yes.
Okay, so what is his net income after taxes and after section one twenty-nine, if he has any? Do you know? His last return, or two or three?
Well, I would have to pull up the, uh, the file here, Dee, and, and, um,
Is he, is he profitable or is he showing a loss? Do you remember?
He's showing, he's showing a loss. He does not have, the, the, the issue here is, is that with his existing business, he, and, and his injuries, he's not able to financially support himself in the business at the level he needs to. Hence, the, 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 the need to move to a different vehicle.
He's injured? You, you mentioned he was injured?
He had, he had an injury that required physical therapy. He's gone through that, um, and is fully recovered.
So, you have, I don't know, uh, excuse me, go ahead.
Yep, Nikki, I saw you had your hand raised and I know you were transitioning. We're, we're kind of at that fifteen-minute mark.
Yep, I'm just gonna transition, but my question was, if we, it's, it's the alternative. If we don't fund this loan, is it at risk of the, the original loan going into default?
Well, you know, I mean, this is, conceivably, this is a loan that we would be bringing to you for a claim without the, uh, you know, we're gonna exhaust every option we have, but that is a possibility, Nikki. I mean, at this point, it's, you know, at that stage. I mean, um, you know, we're, we're at, we're, we're taking, we're tripling our risk in terms of a commitment in the deal. So, we believe in it that much to be willing to do that. So, um, but conceivably, yes, uh, it, it would, um, so, yeah.
Right, do we have other questions? We're getting close to time. We're already over time. I'll be honest, I have concerns on this one for sure. And I think Dee Williams has kind of hit those. I'll summarize mine and y'all chime in, but, you know, we're, we're not making revenue. We're past due. And those are kind of big. You know, I'm not sure if the role of the fund is to bring more money to kind of what is not a successful business potentially. So, I, I think we need to better understand confidence or need additional feedback on this one, Christopher, too. At least for me.
Yeah, let me, I mean, again, he's got revenue. It's not, it's not enough with the existing vehicle. So, um, I, I wouldn't be coming to you guys with this request if I didn't believe he had the capacity and a model that could be successful. At the same time, am I, you know, you know, a little bit scared, so to speak? Sure, I mean, that's what we deal when we deal with startup situations. And this really kind of is a startup situation. I think we got to be careful to be overly critical of his revenue model as it is, looks in the rearview mirror. And, you know, this is one where Kelly and I and have worked with him. And I, I, I believe this, you know, is somebody that we can trust and has demonstrated the tenacity and fight, make this work. And so, um, I, um, you know, the past due status is what it is. But anyways, so, I don't know if that was helpful, Tim, or not.
I appreciate the thoughts. Carl, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think this is a fascinating, um, story of, of what we do here. I mean, if this was me, I'm not getting the money. There's just no way. This, this is a dog. But, you know, here's an African-American guy who, you know, Christopher and, and the Bizworks team really believe in this guy and think, think this is, you know, got potential to help this guy establish a successful sole proprietorship as an African-American man in Ashville. So, for that and no other reason, I, I would vote to approve this loan. I just think it's, it's a mystery to me, but, um, on mission, that's why I'm still here, so.
And I'll add to that, Carl, that our multiracial catalyst council approved it. So, this was something that we took, not just that Kelly, Matt and I approved, but we took it to-
Is he in Catalyst?
Uh, yes, it is, yes. So, um, you know, and, and again, they wrestled with it too. So, I'm not, I get that this is something to wrestle with. But to me, I mean, this gentleman, uh, his story, if I could get more personal with it, is really profound. And I, um, uh, um, you know, the heart of the matter is, you know, I, I feel keenly. Yeah, the numbers, you know, is, are something to struggle with, but, you know, I've done this with Mountain Bizworks for seven and a half years. I really believe in this opportunity. I don't want to increase the law to have it, have us have a loss, I promise you that.
Yeah, and obviously, we didn't realize how limiting the eighteen-foot truck was. Yeah, that's, that's been a real learning for us through this too. And we actually have another client that's running into similar issues unrelated, but, yeah, but, um, so, you know, but I think through, through the conversations with the brokers to really validate, okay, yeah, no, that, they're not gonna give jobs at the current level, but if he had the standard of the twenty-four foot, he could get a hundred more jobs a week. And the per mile rate is much higher, uh, as well. So, it was just, wow, it was really, really eye-opening for us too.
So, this is a tough one for me. Are there any other questions? Is there additional information that could be provided to anyone on the committee to help make a decision? That's a question to the committee, not to Bizworks. Anybody need anything else?
Hey, this is Nikki. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I just want to say, you know, I think we're all a little struggling because we're coming off of this conversation around the loans that we've just had to, to work through. I will say, you know, something that we didn't talk about but came to mind is just the nature of businesses, right? And so, looking at those other loans that we just charged off, you know, we were dealing with retail services. I, I do think, I'm, I'm kind of with Carl on this, only because I do think transportation is, is a viable, and maybe that's for Mountain Biz, is, is transportation in this case presenting itself as a viable option, viable opportunity, given the marketplace?
And I, I mean, I guess, this is difficult, uh, you know, I've taken the, I feel like taking the opposite approach, frankly. And I, I get Nikki's point, a little gun shy after the two hours of conversations here. But I feel like this is raving, you know, waving the red flags on all the things that we just talked about, about the five delinquent loans that we just went through. So, it's like, and frankly, it's a, it's a large loan, we're refinancing something and it's, uh, it doesn't generate that many, uh, new jobs, putting them out of money. So, you know, and to these point, through this conversation, are we just rubber stamping things? Are we actually being fiduciaries of the money? So, I feel a bit torn here because I feel like a bit of a fiduciary at this point as opposed to rubber stamping.
And Christopher, would this one be secured by the vehicle?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, it, it would be. So, I mean, you know, again, to the discussion around collateral and repossession, this would be clearly one that's, you know, easily received and, you know, there's a market for it as to, you know, in a liquidation, you never know. But yeah, this one does have the collateral with it. So, it's not like it's a, you know, that the guarantee is a full, full exposure, so, yeah.
Twenty.
Okay, I just want to know the value of this vehicle, the year, make, model and the value of this vehicle. Is it, is it one that he's purchasing with these funds? You, you said that it was, and so, uh, it, it is worth what, what you're paying for it. How much are you paying for it?
Well, right now, we, you know, he, since we don't have the loan approved, we haven't, you know, there's multiple vehicles that he would be considering. But because we don't have the money to, to fund it, he hasn't been able to lock down one. So, uh, it could be, you know, forty-eight thousand five hundred, it could be fifty. I mean, there's a little bit of, of range there, Dee, just depends, so.
Okay, so you're gonna, uh, you're gonna demand that he sell the eighteen footer that he's got and apply that to our loan balance? Is that correct?
Yeah, we won't be funding the new one without the sale of the, of the existing one. That kind of happens simultaneously.
So, it's whatever trade-in value he can get, I would suspect, or whatever?
Right, it could be a trade-in, or it could be a private sale. He's got, he's, he's, we, he's, he's kind of looking at those options, Dee.
So, what is the, uh, year, make and model of the old eighteen footer? How much is it valued to? What is it, what, what, uh, what is it showing on his balance sheet that it's valued to with accumulated depreciation? Do you know?
I can get that information, Dee, but I-
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, he thinks that it will net between fifteen and twenty thousand, so-
I doubt it. I mean, I'm, I'm just, and that's why I'm asking for the year, make and model, because I can get a, a blue book on it in a few minutes. I guess I'm just, uh, I'm just, uh, you know, I'm just amazed that he hasn't shown up on our, he, he's on the delinquency sheet and here we are for a loan to refi to keep him out of what seems to be a foreclosure, excuse me, a, a, uh, another delinquency. And this was one of the primary questions I had. These loans that are refi, I'm a, I'm an old-fashioned person. When I see a refi come up with an existing lender, it sends red flags. I mean, that's up and down. And then I don't know enough about a revenue stream to, to see if he can really afford. I guess that's the problem I'm having, but I, I'm gonna cease with that. Thank you.
All right, we're just on the refi, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I, I think we're heading in the same, the same direction, Christopher. But just to clarify, the loan that's being refinanced is already an MCCF-backed loan. So, it is not new money that we're bringing to MCCF.
Okay, what is, uh, what kind of loan does he have that's being refinanced?
It's already an MCCF-backed loan. Meaning that it's been in the program.
It's been in the program?
And what do we give him money for? To do what?
The, 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 the money is essentially to acquire the new vehicle and provide some working capital.
Now, what did we give him the money for the first time?
The, the money the first time was, is he had financed the, the existing vehicle with a predatory lender. So, there was a refinance of that balance plus some startup working capital.
All right, y'all, this is a good discussion. We're at almost eleven-thirty. We've gone thirty minutes over. Which is no need to be sorry, anyone. Good questions. So, I'm just gonna put where I'm at on this and then, but I don't represent the committee. So, based on what I've heard today, I, I'm not, I'm not at yes. I would need additional information to better understand. And Christopher, I, I, I respect your, your wanting to support this, totally get it, you believe in him. That's great. There's some red flags here that we've already talked about, so that's where I'm at. If there's additional information that could be provided, maybe we could delay it for a future meeting and maybe that would change where I stand. But all that said, that's just where I'm at. Is there a motion to approve the loan guarantee as presented?
And Ted, this is Nikki, just point of order question, really.
Yeah.
Because we're barely at quorum, does that mean we would have to have a one-hundred percent affirmative vote in order to approve the loan? Because again, it might, if, if that is the case, what I'm hearing is that it may be an option to table it till the next meeting so that Mountain Biz can bring more information is the only way that this could, could potentially be a positive vote. Otherwise, it seems as if it might fail. So, I'm just wanting to, to clarify, first question. Would all five members have to approve because of the quorum rules?
We have, we have six voting members. Carl, Hunter, Dee, John, Nikki and myself. So, this could certainly pass, regardless of my vote. So, but to Nikki's question, um, so that-
I would have voted no, so just to cut through the noise, so I guess the vote was-
I would, I would vote no as well. We cut to the chase.
So, as presented today, Hunter, you're raising your hand. Is there a-
I would just encourage us to table it and get more in-
I would just encourage us to table it and get more information because right now I am not very positive about this potential without having more information to sway me more appropriately.
So I think that's fair. Thank you, Hunter, for chiming in. There's nothing that says we can't table this, y'all. We don't have to vote on it today. I know that this is some, some time sensitive to Biz Works and the business owner in particular. But you, you've heard kind of the concerns today. Is there, do you feel like there's additional information or just?
I, I don't think there's additional information that I can bring that would be, you know, materially changed kind of what I've tried to share. I mean, obviously, we could, you know, get to some of the nuance to use kind of these word that she uses. But I, I don't think that in two weeks, I'm gonna have new information to kind of change kind of things. So to, to, to be, you know, yeah.
Understood. Matt, Yaslin?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that there, I mean, y'all wrestle with a lot of the same things that, that we did, this case for business, we, we supported getting into business. He's relatively inexperienced, ran into some challenges, but I think his eyes open, has figured out how to pivot and has a pathway to success that we believe in. And we see this all the time that like, okay, you know, a lot of folks will hit bumps in the road and, and, you know, we try to be there to support them through that to the fullest extent we can. So we believe he's got a pathway there. So we're supportive of it. I mean, if there are additional things that could be helpful, but I think we provided a lot of color and background on this, on the situation.
Thanks, Matt. Dee, I saw your hand raised.
And thank, thank you, Tim, and thank you, Matt. And thank you, thank you all of y'all for, for coming today. Let me give you a little bit of nuance, something that some, most people won't give out. And I certainly haven't been handed much in my lifetime here in this city. One of the things that might help us, and it sounds like you've got somebody with a big heart, but in business, heart doesn't matter, numbers matter. If we could get some of those brokers to say that they'd hand this fellow some contracts. And if you got those coaches working at MCCF, show them how to go out and get some contracts, please, and put them in writing. If we could get some brokers to say that they would hand this man some contracts or work with him and this is an estimated amount, please bring that. And that's my nuance. And that's how I deal with people who have a lot of altruism because altruism won't let them succeed. These types of strategic business moves will. Thanks, you guys.
So, you know, along the lines of what Dee has said, I do feel like, you know, we don't need to vote on this. You've seen kind of where things are falling today. I do think if there's, if we could, if the situation, if the business situation changes, if we're like no longer delinquent as an example, or to Dee's point, if there was something more tangible in terms of projected revenue. I, I feel like that is the type of stuff that maybe changes this conversation at a future meeting. And so, you know, Carl, you, did you have something?
No, I don't, but I gotta go.
Yeah, all right. So look, let's leave it there. Matt and team, if y'all would like to revisit this loan guarantee in the future, we can bring it back and discuss. At this point, I'm gonna look to close this meeting. I appreciate everyone joining us, but before I do that, Charles, do we have any public comment? Charles, you're on mute. Do we have any public comment today, Charles? I'm gonna go with, we, we don't have any public comment. I appreciate everyone for joining us today. Thank you, Charles, no problem. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be on March 2nd. I will be back to the normal starting time. That should be on your calendars. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thanks again, have a great weekend, y'all.
Come on, have a good weekend. Thank you, bye now.